I have our roll call. District one, Mr. Duggie, present. District two, Mr. Venable, present. District three, Mr. Miller, present. District four, Mr. Leble, present. And Chairman also present. We do have a forum present. Have our invocation by Mr. Porter and our pledge by Mr. Duggie.
It's great. For God our Father, we're blessed to be here tonight. We thank you so much for this facility. We're especially thankful tonight for schools. As we meet in the school, we're so mindful of educators and students that come here every day. God, we pray that you bless them and guide them through their walks in life. We thank you for the men that are here tonight that will make decisions about the county. We pray that you'll give them wisdom and discernment. We're also thankful for the people that are showing up tonight for the meeting. We pray that you will give them safe travel home when they depart. We pray that they will continue to honor their elected officials as we are told to in Scripture. So God, we pray that you'll watch over us, guide us, and direct us, save us. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item is approval of the agenda. We have four items on our work session agenda and one item to follow for voting on. So do we have any changes before we proceed? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. As opposed to... We've had no one sign up for this portion of the meeting, so I'll move on to the discussion items. And the first item is the Council on Aging employees regarding their pay scale compensation. And let's see what we got here. During the last audit, we were notified that our Council on Aging employees were not on a pay scale. And in order to comply with that request, some changes will be necessary to make that happen. You'll notice there are 12 employees which this will affect. What the goal is, is to put these employees on the very base level of the pay scale. You have to see that under where it says the new there. And right now, the total cost on this looks like about $9,500. We could amend the budget if we plan to move forward with this. However, I don't think it's going to be necessary. Looking at the budget as it's presented, it looks like these costs can be absorbed within the current budget that's been presented by the Council on Aging. Obviously, if you look at these rates, this is still not where we should be. But I think considering the budget situation, there's nothing else that we can do. We need to get in compliance, but I think that's all we can do for the time being. So the highlighted portions are the amounts that are the changes. And you'll notice that last highlighted portion there at the bottom, the total additional. That's the total amount. So any questions or comments on this? And again, this was a response to an issue that was brought up during the audit for 2013. Is that correct? 2013 audit that happened. We received that audit a couple of weeks ago. Again, it wasn't listed as a finding. It was something held when we had the discussions. However, soon if we continue the practice, it would be a finding in the audit. Questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, would you explain where some of this funding comes from for this agency?
Yeah, the biggest part of the funding comes from agencies like TARCOT. That's who we work with the most to receive the funding. And you'll notice actually on that first group of employees, that's provided by federal funds. The second group of employees, there are revenues from TARCOT that come into that, not a great deal. And the third one actually is a great revenue source for the whole Council on Aging process. It's Medicaid waiver and the Homemaker program also. That actually makes quite a bit of money. That's why it's not listed in yellow. There won't be any additional. And we believe ultimately there won't be any additional cost because of the funds that that organization provides. So the first one is your transportation program. That's the bus program that we have to bring folks into town. And the second one is the...
It's the same activity, isn't it? TARCOT.
Title III Nutrition Centers. That's where we do the bills for folks and seniors in the community and things like that. So that provides for those things. Any other questions or comments? All right, if there's no opposition, I'd like to place this on the agenda next Monday. The next item is the Senior RX contract. You have a copy of the current contract for Mr. Miller again at the Senior RX. This contract does need to be renewed, and that's what you have before. Actually, this is the old contract. The only change will be that if we leave this at full time, there'll be some additional benefits that have to be received. I've told Ms. Bottomley for me to find the funding supply for that, or else we won't be able to continue that. So that'll be the only change if that does occur. Again, this is just to renew the contract with this employee. And Senior RX, I don't know if folks are familiar with that, is a program that provides reduced, lower-cost drugs for seniors in our community. It's a very big program. It's a growing program. I think your director of that is doing a great job of getting more folks to be aware of it and advertising that. So it's been a good thing for Jackson County and hopefully we'll continue to keep it viable. Again, the funding for this, the county actually doesn't put any dollars into this program. This is funded by the Legislative Delegation and by TARCOT. So there's no cost to the county on this. Any questions, other comments? Okay, if there's no oppositions on this item also, then I'd like to place that on the agenda for next Monday as well. Okay, next item regarding surplus for the jail. You have a letter from the sheriff regarding surplus property that he'd like to mark as surplus. I think, is the plan placed out on go deals to begin with, or are we just going to try to sell it for...
Probably if you want to say it, we'll put it on the go deals. I don't know what everybody means. It's not worth anything. It's like 18 years old. It's wore out.
Okay, so we won't specify this needs to be on go deals. It'll be just sold as scrap as our...
We can see what it brings, but if it brings $10, that's more than we got.
All right, so any questions or comments on this? If there's no opposition, then we'll place that on the agenda for next Monday. Final item on the work session, a resolution for Northeast Alabama Water, Sewer, and Fire Protection District. As I understand this, this is necessary for the commission to approve, to change... And I'll just read the letter. It has been determined that in order for the directors of the Northeast Alabama Water, Sewer, and Fire Protection District to receive payment for their services as directors, it's necessary to amend the charter to allow such payments to be made. It's my understanding that currently there is... They don't have any water service in Jackson County. I'm not mistaken on that. But we do, because we appoint a board member to this, we have authority as far as amendment of the... What was the word I said? Of the charter. So this is really something I'd like everybody to kind of take a look at and review. And Mr. Board干部, if you've had an opportunity to look at this yet or not, but if you would take a look at this and review, we could discuss it again next week and determine if we need to move forward or how we need to move forward on it. All I received was a letter. I really didn't get any more explanation of any other than it was to change the charter. So any questions or comments on that? And we'll proceed next week with that as necessary if there's an opposition to that. All right, so that concludes our work session. We'll move into the meeting. And the only item we have on the meeting agenda is a motion to hire a temporary worker for the Parks Department. You have in your packets a recommendation from the park manager for this temporary six-month temporary position. And I ask that we make it effective immediately so that he can go ahead and get the personal board if we approve it tonight. So before we go to the motion, are there any discussion or questions or comments on this?
We have been doing two temporarys. Call for access from the building. One of them is the...
We had made an agreement, I think, to reduce costs, that we would cut down to one this year and see how that worked for. I think we discussed that here in the bus meetings last year. Any other questions or comments? I do have a motion to approve the recommendation.
I'll make the motion.
Motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed say no. Okay. We'll do our report at the end of our community meeting, if that's okay. Everyone should have a packet with the "Did you know" there. Obviously, I think we've done a community meeting up here maybe two years ago. The purpose of the community meetings obviously is to get information out about what the county is doing. That's why we decided also to include our work session in the community meeting. You can see a little bit of the process that we go through as we do that. And then also to find out, you know, the issues that are facing citizens in the county throughout the county. So that's why we want to come out and meet with individuals throughout the county, find out what's going on, tell you what's going on with us, and you know, just have that collaboration. Tonight, we do want to put a little bit of focus on the sales tax. I know that a lot of folks have heard about the sales tax, talked about the sales tax. All that we ask is that folks get educated about the reasons, and then of course, hopefully we'll have the opportunity to vote on that later in the year. We just want to get the information out there and allow that to share. So what we will be talking about tonight will be the sales tax to begin with. Once we get into the open question and answer, you can ask questions about anything that's going on in the county, any issues or concerns you may have. Or you can ask any questions about sales tax or whatever else the case may be. So I'll kind of do my best to quickly go through some of the points that we have that we wanted to make regarding the sales tax. And so obviously, we presented, the commission presented a resolution requesting the legislature to give us authority to call for a referendum for a one-cent sales tax. The purpose for the sales tax obviously is after two years in office, we have cut our general fund budget as well as we've cut solid waste. We've cut the parks, obviously. We've cut public works. We've cut just about every department in our general fund budget by over 20%. We still have a budget deficit even with that cut. So we feel like in order to do the things that we need to do for the county's future, which would be to bring in jobs, to have good paved roads, and provide the services that we need to provide the county, that this is the way to go would be to seek some type of additional revenue and new revenue that would allow us to do that. So some things that I want to point out before we get into question and answer. I do want everyone to know the county does not get any sales tax right now. The sales tax that we receive, the two cents that's in place actually goes towards education. So that's not any county revenue that we get. That's something that a lot of folks aren't aware of. And the reason we're pursuing a sales tax as opposed to maybe a property tax or some type of gas tax is the sales tax is something that doesn't only affect folks here in Jackson County. It affects folks that come through Jackson County, folks that may stay the weekend in certain places, or visitors, or tourists. And we feel like that's a benefit there. But it's also what we would consider a growth tax. Property taxes, some of these fees that are in place, they don't grow as the economy grows necessarily. With the sales tax, that does grow, and it allows us, you know, as we have more traffic on the roads, as we have need for either more deputies or better service fire departments, it gives us the ability to service and finance that with additional growth in the sales tax. Alternatively, obviously, if the economy drops, then you have to deal with that. But we see that, and we saw that back in 2008 with the economies from the revenues that we do receive. Problem is, whereas sales tax recovered long ago from that, the property tax is just now reaching the levels that we received back then. Some of the other points I want to make, like I said, the county general fund's been cut by over 20%. We had a $1.4 million deficit is what we ended 2013 with. That's off of a $7 million budget roughly. I think it may have been budgeted, it ain't at that time. But $1.4 million deficit. In 2013, we patched the budget with $350,000 deficit. So we've cut our budget by over $1 million, or found in some cases, a couple of revenue sources from the park and solid waste to kind of help shore that up. So there's been a big gap has been cut down there. We feel like we've cut out pretty much all the waste. Some of the things we've done to cut the budget include reduction in staff. We had a retirement incentive. But before that even, we did not hire certain positions as they became vacant. We eliminated waste as I said, and there was some waste in the budget which we felt needed to be removed. And we've tried to eliminate all the waste that we can find in that budget. Reduction on contract expenditures, and then general changes in the way we've done business to try and reduce costs. One thing I want to point out, if this sales tax passes, we're not going to stop doing that. We feel government needs to be responsible with the funds that we have, and we're going to continue to try to find if there's an issue of waste, if there's an issue where that money doesn't need to be spent, then we will try to cut that and reduce those costs. A few things on the revenue sources. Again, as I stated, we don't receive any sales tax. For every $36.25 that someone pays on a driver's license when you renew it, the county gets $1.50 of that. That's the only portion of that we get. Already $23.25 you're paying a car tag fee, and that's, you know, you've got your property tax on it, but for the tag fee itself, we get $1.25 of that. So we're getting, you know, when you come to the courthouse and do business, we're not getting all those funds that you're paying. A lot of that goes to the state or a lot of the other agencies in the county. We think it's important to let you know that because we want you to know that we're really operating off of a penny budget here. For a piece of property with a home that appraises for $100,000 within the county, we get $60 of that. So if your home appraises for $100,000 anywhere in the county, and you've got your homestead exemption on it, the county gets $60 of whatever you pay. You know, it varies depending on where you live, obviously. But that's what the county will get off of it. So, you know, think about that when you pay your property taxes. One important thing, and we'll talk about the roads and why that's important, but the amount of gas tax revenue which Jackson County received in 2014 was down 14% from 2011. So in three years, it dropped 14%. This year, I think we're looking like we may have about the same number. But we've seen the revenue from gas tax drop tremendously over the past few years. And I think everybody knows the cost of pay has increased over that same timeframe and over the past 10 years. So we see, you know, the money that's utilized for roads is being reduced there. TBA lieu of tax for the general fund has dropped by 13% in the past two years. And of course, we know TBA lieu of tax affects not just the county government. It affects the school board, the Board of Education, our municipalities, volunteer fire departments, rescue squads, a lot of different agencies. And I'll try to get a little bit more into that in a minute. Jackson County receives $500,000 in federal funds for road paving each year. Is that correct? About 500 every year? 530? We paved about four miles, and County Road 95 right over here is the one we paved this last year with that $500,000. That's what we got to pave with the federal dollars we got. With our local money last year, and we did this not because we had the money in the budget, we did this because we took it out of a piggy bank, we spent money to pave eight miles of roadway. If we continue that trend, even if we're getting four miles for federal funds and eight miles for local funds, if we continue that trend, it's going to take us over 90 years to get back to the roads we paved last year. Roads don't tend to last that long. I'm not, I'm still learning the process, but I don't think that, you know, they'll make it. So we've got to come up with some type of source of funding to help get these roads back paved, or we, you know, we'll have to start taking them back to their original church. The cost of paving with asphalt ranges from $110,000 to $130,000 per mile, and the cost of paving with tar and gravel ranges from 40 to 50. So this road over here was about $125,000, was that what you said? $120,000 a mile is what we paved for 95. And I think this year, we got our paving for $45,000 per mile with our tar and gravel treatments sitting at. So, you know, paving is an expensive endeavor. Now, some of the, you know, what we want to use the sales tax, that's some information that we need to share. We need to tell you, you know, where does our revenue come from? People ask that all the time, you know, what are you doing with the revenue you get? Well, that's some of the revenue that we get. What do we want to do with this one cent sales tax? The biggest thing obviously that we talk about is the county roads. That's kind of been a focus to some extent. A big chunk of this money, we'll go to that. We think it's important because we have a lot of roads that are falling into disrepair. I know there's several folks here that have talked about some of the roads that they live on or that they're nearby, drive on every day, that are important to them. And we feel like if we don't come up again, like I said, with some source of funding, we're going to have to come up with a different solution for our roads, and whether that be putting it back to dirt or whatever else. We can't continue to patch them, or else it's going to be just nothing but a patch there eventually. So that is what we kind of have the biggest source of funding on. Next would be school resource officers. Now, we're not going to be able to put school resource officers in every school. We don't think that that's going to be feasible. But we want to get enough to where we have a good presence and a good rotation, of course, work with the school board the best we can to increase the number of officers that are on the, out there. And that does two things. That puts your resource officers in your schools, but it also provides a resource officer or a sheriff's deputy in an area that may not see one very often. During the day, we may have three or four riding the road, is that right? And in the evenings, you know, we're lucky if we have three, correct? So we need some more presence. For the size county we have, we need some more presence of some deputies on the roads, I think. And of course, the safety of our children, I think, is paramount. It's been something that's been talked about a lot since we've been in office. And when this idea came up at our budget meetings last year, this was one of the first topics that came up was a school resource officer. So that's one that we feel is very important. Now recently, fire departments in Jackson County have undergone some funding changes. Because of that, we've got some fire departments that are hurting. If something doesn't happen regarding funding for some of these fire departments, and ISO ratings are going to change, insurance costs is going to go up, there's a lot of negative effects that can happen if we don't come up with some type of support for the fire departments. Now, that wasn't something we talked about necessarily early on, but once we found out about the funding changes, we felt it necessary that these fire departments participate. A lot of folks, I don't know if we really realize or understand or appreciate what all these volunteer fire departments do. I think the word is right there in volunteer. You know, they're giving their time, they're giving their, in some cases, risking their lives to do some things for the county, the citizens of the county. And I think it's important that we support them through this, especially in the hard times that they've got now. Community industrial and business development, whether it be water projects, sidewalk projects, items for any way we can help the school system, different types of things that we can assist with when it comes to community development. And of course, industrial development, gas, as I said, water, sewer, different types of things we can do like that. As well as nowadays, it's about bidding on companies. You have to put money on the table to get a lot of companies nowadays, and we need the resources to be able to participate in that. Last year, the Jackson County Commission gave nothing to our EDA office to support business development. We don't have the resources to do it. We're asking for the resources to help with that so that we can encourage more industry to come, so that we have something that we can put on the table when they say, you know, that they want to come here. We lost a very good project that would have been about 500 jobs last year to Mississippi, and the difference was money. I think we were in the bottom three in that site selection process. We lost Mississippi, and of course, they essentially may have bought the project, but it was hard, we couldn't compete because we didn't have the resources to do so. So, you know, there's a lot of benefit to being able to say, hey, we're willing to put something on the table there. And then the final point would be to provide and shore up the remaining budget deficit, as I've said, and then handle some other things in the general fund while we continue to reduce waste in those possible areas. So that's a rundown of some of the revenues, a rundown of why we want it. Before we get into in lieu of tax real quickly, are there anything from the commissioners, any other points on those two items we need to make?
The only thing I could think of that you might have missed talking on was the amount of property the state of Alabama has bought in Jackson County, they don't pay property tax. I think it came on the county, more than 20,000 acres, but it's been a forever while in existence.
And that's, you know, forever while could be a great thing for Jackson County. We do get a lot of folks that come from out of town to visit a lot of the properties. But like Mr. Venable said, the state has bought up a lot of property. Of course, we don't get property tax off of that. We don't get sales tax for those folks that come in, and that, I guess, leads to the good point. We can have 20,000 people come to Jackson County tomorrow just to visit and, you know, recreation or whatever. And unless they stay at county park, the only revenue we get is that gas tax. And that's not going to pave roads a little bit, we get off of that. So we feel like, again, the sales tax is something that'll benefit when we have those things. We have the fishing tournament, the Big Bass Flashes last weekend. Again, the revenue we got was off of gas, and if anybody stayed at the county park, beyond that, we don't receive anything. So that's important, good point. Anything else? I do want to talk about TBA lieu of tax real quickly. I get a question a lot about that. You know, it's why don't you just take the TBA lieu of tax? That'll solve all your problems. What people don't understand is how that's breaking down. And I'll go real quickly over how it's broken down and what it benefits, and then, again, keep in mind any questions you may have about this. But the TBA lieu of tax goes to benefit volunteer fire departments, the rescue squads, economic development, ambulance service, all the municipalities in the county, Jackson County schools and the Jackson County general fund. That is 90, okay, 89 and a half percent, is that right? 88 and a half percent of the TBA lieu of tax gets broken up between all those entities. So unless we take it away from all those entities, you know, there's no real benefit there. The remaining portion, which I think a lot of people are kind of up in arms or have questions about, is the Legislative Emergency Fund. That's about $800,000 a year. Now, when we talk about TBA lieu of tax, when we talk about that group that meets to kind of say, you know, here's some of this money goes here and there, that's where that money is coming from. It's not coming from the big pot. It's coming just from that emergency fund. That emergency fund has decreased over half. They used to have $2.5 million, I think, that came to that fund every year. This year, it'll be just about $850,000 comes to that. Now, even if the legislature gives that to us, to the county commission, that's not $850,000. We can just say, you know, it's going to the general fund. That $850,000 goes towards education, goes towards, again, to support the Senior RX program, goes towards CASA, all these different organizations that you see through the county, these nonprofit organizations, most likely they receive funds from that remaining $800,000. So if it was given back to the county, we could cut all that out, and those organizations would be in a hurt, and we could balance our general fund. We still wouldn't be able to pave roads, but we could do that. But I don't think that that's the end-all-be-all solution to our budget problem. That's not going to solve the issue. So I did want to touch on that and explain a little bit about how those TBA lieu of taxes work because, again, it's not the overall, the end-all-be-all solution to what we're looking for. We've got to look at a long-term picture, and that's what we're doing with the sales tax. So any comments on that before we proceed? Okay. Last thing, we'll answer some frequently asked questions, and then we'll open it up for any other comments or questions. I've already answered, you know, what exactly will it be used for? The items that we talked about, that's what we have set aside to be used for, obviously. If there's opportunity, then we can expand that. But those are the core items, and that's what we want to focus on, to use these dollars for. How can we be sure that roads will be fixed in a timely manner? I think that you'll see, it may take a year or two to get really going with that, but I think that you'll see that these, you'll see a vast improvement in the number of roads that we pave on an annual basis with this. We could quadruple the number of roads we pave if we do, you know, as we expect with this in lieu of tax, or with this sales tax. Okay, I've had a comment that all the county roads are a mess, and what's going on with all the money? Right now, the only funds that go to public works for paving or for any of the operations are gas taxes. The general fund has not currently supplemented any. We know that's going to have to change. As I said, gas tax has gone down 14% in the past three years. So we know that that funding source is going to have to change, and we've got to work to make that happen, obviously. So, you know, the money that's there, the answer is, there's really not a lot of money there. We use the money to patch, we use it to mow, both of which I know are very important things. We get called all the time on mowing, and we get called all the time on potholes, you know, things like that, and everyday operations. We use a lot of that for materials on the roads that we do pave, and then, you know, some for the contracts for the roads we pave. And then, of course, keeping up the equipment that we have is an important aspect of it also. And, you know, we've done a good job, our engineers have done a great job of keeping some of our equipment rotated, even making some money off of some of those things, which helps the department, obviously. But you can't do that with all the equipment, and of course, you've got to keep and maintain. So that's, you know, in general, where those dollars go right now. Another thing I do want to specify, empty buildings. We've got a couple of buildings on the square which I think folks are confused to whether it's the county's or the delegation. We don't, the county does not have responsibility or ownership of anything, any of the buildings on the square except for the courthouse. I think, you know, the legislature's trying to come up with some ideas on that, and I think they've done a good job trying to research all that. So they'll, I'm sure they'll come up with ideas for those empty buildings or what's going to happen there, but we don't have that responsibility. I said, let's see. Does this affect people that don't use county services? If, you know, someone that comes in for a weekend, you know, staying wherever it be a campground or whatever else, everybody... a campground or whatever else, everybody uses county services. If it's, you know, the need for the fire department if something happens, or volunteer fire departments, if it's the need for a sheriff's deputy if something happens, they're driving on county roads a lot of times. So, I think if you look at, you know, the funds, you know, people from outside paying these taxes, it's affecting them just as much as it is affecting the people in Jackson County, because if they're coming into Jackson County, they're utilizing our services and our roadways. A question on was this unforeseen, result of bad management, not being proactive? There are a lot of things that led to the budget situation that we were, that we came into. Spending was part of it, but if you look over the past seven or eight years, you'll see where a lot of revenue sources the county was receiving went away over time as the economy fell and as there were certain situations where the dollars were being put in the wrong place and started being shifted where they were supposed to be going. So, the revenue for the county actually was reduced with several different factors. I think there was a property tax that came up around that time that wasn't renewed. So, a lot of different things affected the revenue side of this. And then, of course, the expense side, that was, there were increased spending as well with that going on. So, that's, all of those things kind of led to this budget situation, and I'd be glad to sit down with anyone and kind of explain more detail on some of these things. But this isn't something that happened overnight, it's not something that just occurred, and it's not something that's been going to be fixed overnight. We've been working two and a half years on it and trying to get it, you know, where it's manageable, and we'll continue to work on this to keep the dollars where they need to go. So, that's kind of a big question, general overview, but wanted to share that. We have not given raises since we've been in office. I do want to make that clarification. We've been in for two years, and the county employees have not received raises in those two years. That's something that I get a lot of comments on, but we don't feel we can do that and be responsible if we're, especially if asked for additional dollars. But we've been trying to manage our budget, and you can't do things like that. We have continued to do business. We've got a park project we're talking about. Anything that we think is going to save the county money in the long run, or anything that we think is going to increase revenue in the long run, we're going to pursue that. But things that don't do that, we've had to stay away from it. Unfortunately, that's been one of those things that we've not been able to do. So, I think that's about, that's some of the general stuff that's been come up. Any other things you guys want to point out on those items before we proceed? Open it up for questions? So, we've had two individuals sign up to speak. We'll start with them, and then we'll open it up for any other questions, or comments. Ms. Ellen O'Connor?
Ellen Skyline, and I'm definitely against the one cent sales tax, but actually, I really wanted to address the newspaper ad for the resolution. When do you expect to have a vote on this?
If everything goes as planned, it would be end of September 1st or October. We'll just have to wait and see when it passes, if it passes eventually.
So, your fiscal year starts again October 1st, correct?
Correct, yes.
Why don't you just wait till the March primary and not have extra fees for having a special election, which I'd really like to know what it would cost the county to have a special election?
It would cost the county approximately $80,000 to have a special election. We feel it's an investment worth making. The reason that we need to do it as early as possible, if it does pass in October or September, whenever that's held, it will not go in effect until the following January. The reason we wish to pursue that early on is because we're running out of a piggy bank. The piggy bank's almost empty. We need to know as quickly as possible whether this is a solution or whether we need to go ahead and cut the funds.
But what about the people in this county whose piggy banks are even less than yours are? They can't afford another $10 on $100 for their groceries.
And if they decide that that's not for them, it'd be a dollar on $100 for groceries. But if they decide, you know, that's why we're leaving it to the people to make that decision. It'd be $10 on $1,000.
My next question is, you've got on here that says, "On the ballot used at the election, the proposition to be voted on shall be stated substantially as follows. Do you favor the local law authorizing the county commission to levy a sales and use tax of one cent for the general operation of the county? Yes or no? Is that really how it's going to be worded?"
That is the exact wording that will be on, whatever is on the law is the exact wording that will be on the ballot. We have to do it as per the law.
That's the exact wording?
Yes. Anything else?
Yeah.
All right, Ms. Kim Cather?
I'm from Skyline also, and I'm against it. I recently done a survey for the last few weeks, and I've been around the county. I went to the restaurants and gas stations, just all over grocery stores, asking even strangers, how did they feel about it? And I haven't found one person that really wants it, so, you know.
I think you'll find we don't want it.
I know, I understand. But here's some of the reasons. One is, the average family income is $37,634. That's your average family income in the county. I'm going to say it one more time. The average family income in Jackson County is $37,634. And also, I researched, almost one-third, it's 30.9% of the county families are on fixed income or below poverty level. So, you need to take that into consideration, you know, because these people are, you know, they, they having a hard time. But here, I wanted to state, you know, these families are paying for your salaries and employees for the county. But here are the county official salaries that were printed in the paper. County engineer, 158, I rounded it off to the nearest, $158,000. Proba judge makes $99,000, revenue commissioner, $91,000. County administrator, $70,000. County commission chairman, $70,000. And the thing of it is, you know, you can't expect these people, because they're just making average. You guys are almost making three, some of you are almost making three times or even more than what an average person in this county makes.
You said the average was 37, correct?
Yeah, 37,634, it's on the statistics on the internet. So, for every, what you're going to take away from that family in one year is $376,000. That's a lot of money for somebody that's in poverty level.
Where is that number?
That's 1% of 37,000.
We're not taking 1% of their income, though. We're taking 1% of-
Of the sales. I know, but if they spend their money, which they do, they'll spend their money mainly in Jackson County, and most people do, buying groceries, you know, gas, you know, stuff like that. But anyhow, it's going to take a lot of money away from them. And has any of you guys ever went and volunteered at the food banks here in the different areas?
I've been to one.
I mean, but it's astonishing, people that are just starving for food, and then you're, and I just can't see you guys, you know, asking these people that are below income, some of them in poverty level, some of them, you know, don't make as near as much as you guys, some of you guys up there, a one cent's going to really hurt them. It wouldn't, I don't think it's going to hurt somebody that makes $70,000 or $90,000 or $158,000 a year. They're not really going to see it. But these people that are in poverty level, that are making average, it's going to hurt us. It's really going to hurt us. And I just wished you guys wouldn't pass it, you know, but that's all I have to say.
It is going to be up to the people to make that decision. Again, the dollars we want to spend this on, economic and industrial development, the goal is to get higher paying, paying and better paying jobs in Jackson County, which we hope will help everybody out. So, that, to me, is an important aspect of this and something that is going to help that median household income.
Well, the EDA gets over $300,000 from the TBA lieu tax, and over half of that is salaries. And what have they brought in, in the last four or five years? Have they brought any high-paying jobs?
KTNA, I can't think of, Sanos has expanded several times in the industrial park. Another Johns Manville actually going through another expansion right now in the industrial park. If you look at what's happened, a lot of expansion has been done locally, but that's been stuff done, supported by our EDA.
Well, I read in our statistics that Scottsboro's not growing, and neither is Jackson County.
If you look at the sales tax revenue, I think you'll see that something's happening, because spending has increased. There's some benefit there, something positive is going on because revenue has increased.
Well, I know there's a lot of people that have to go out of the county to work, out of the state to work, to get the high-paying jobs.
And that's why we want to bring those here.
Okay.
Ms. Chairman, I'd like to reiterate one thing. We're not passing a tax. We're passing a resolution for people to vote on this. It's everybody's opinion, everybody's vote counts. This commission is not passing a tax. We're passing a proposal for the people of this county to vote on it. This is about choices, where we go in the future.
Can I ask one more thing?
Most certainly.
I know that you guys had bought out some early retirement, and I know that helped save some money, but what you did mention is that, what I was told, that you hired two of them back on a contract, $20,000 a year.
That's still saving as well.
But why didn't you train somebody in that department, whether it be mapping and appraisal or probate judge's department, to do these people's work and not have to hire them back?
They're training someone right now as we speak.
I know, but why didn't they do that before they bought all these out? That's three, that's, okay, it's three years, that's $60,000 for each employee for the next three years, that's $120,000.
We're saving $225,000 a year at minimum on all these retirements. To do that, we would have had to postpone that retirement incentive. So, for the next three years, we would have had to spend another $225,000 while we trained that person.
It takes a year to train?
No, well, okay, for the next year.
Yeah, but what I was, what I would like you to say, you know, you knew this is going to come up eventually. All these, Kathy's been there forever, and so has Donna, and they've been there for a long time. You knew eventually they would retire. Why didn't somebody, somebody ought to be able to do the same things that they can in that office, that work in that office right now. It's kind of like when, okay, Jeff, for instance, when he was running, and he was the only guy that could do backup. Y'all should have trained somebody, because what happens if somebody gets hurt, can't come? I mean, you need to prepare for those.
I agree that cross-training is essential, and we started to do it in our office, we started to do it in several departments in the county that haven't had that opportunity. It, you know, all I can say is it's something that hasn't been done and we are starting to do now. I feel like, though, postponing that and paying an extra $225,000 a year, we did have two retire, we replaced it with one and a half people essentially. So, you're still saving dollars on the decisions that were made.
Right, right.
And that was, that was what it was about, it was about saving dollars, and we felt that was the way to go. So, bottom line, it saves dollars, like I said, we're going to try to do it.
The mapper, the mapper that we done the contract with for $2,000, he was making $54,000, I think, I mean, best I remember. He retired, we get a part-time contract with him for $2,000. We're required by the state to have X number of certified mappers per so many thousand parks, I don't remember it exactly. I mean, that's not something we deal with directly, that's permission.
So, you guys are training somebody to do the mapping appraisal, so when he goes?
Yes, but instead of hiring another mapper and putting them on state retirement and paying their FICA and everything else, we done a contract with him to prevent having hires. So, we're saving $30,000 by doing a part-time contract with him instead of hiring the people.
I realize that, but you could have already had that done. I mean, it's, you know, you know.
It does take three years, actually, to get your state certification, so we've been here two and a half, we couldn't have done that within the timeframe we've been in office.
But you could have with the probate judge's office, correct?
We're actually not paying for the retired person there. The probate judge has kind enough-
But you gave the probate judge the money to, you know, if it come out of their own funds.
It comes out of his arm, it's his own funds.
We have not put a dollar into that, though. He reimburses us for everything.
Is that the slush fund?
It's not an index fund, it's not a slush fund, it's an index fund.
Index?
For 40, yeah. They use that, they're supposed to use that, or have been passed to help index a lot of the information and to help the county out, and decided to do that for this short period of time until we come up with our solutions.
Well, these citizens that I have talked to, they suggested to me that the county commission should evaluate some salaries, positions, and spending to see where the problem is within the county. You know, they think they could do some more.
We've only been here two years, and I want to reiterate this. We've been here two years, and we are doing just that. We've been doing it since we took office. Government is not fast, but those things that you're alluding to, we have, we've been trying to work on those. That's why we provided the retirement incentive. We're trying to get those higher salaries out of the system and go back to lower ones, where we can do the same services and the same quality. So, the comments that you're making are very good, but we're doing a lot of those things.
I'll give an example. Our administrator, the administrator we had was making $95,000 a year. Mr. Manning's not making, I think you announced his, $70,000. That's nowhere near what it was.
Right.
And our engineer will be retiring, and of course, we'll bring an engineer at a much lower rate than that. So, any opportunity we have, we're making those changes.
So, is that, I still haven't figured out why she's gone and then y'all, you know, settled out of court. You know, you got to consider that money that you paid out of court. I don't know how much, nobody knows how much that is that y'all, but, you know, y'all did settle out, or, yeah, y'all settled out of court, and I'm sure that's a lot of money right there.
The only thing I can say to that is-
I know you can't say.
Right, there's a huge benefit, the option would think was a huge benefit for the county, and is well-paid for already. There's been no cost beyond this point for that.
One thing too about the engineer, the state pays 80% of his salary.
75%.
75% of his salary. So, we're only paying 25% of it, so.
And where does the state get the money from? The taxpayer?
I can't answer the state, I'd like to answer the county.
Well, I'm not used to state's salary for the engineer, and then the county doesn't have to pay anything.
It's only 75%. Let's move on if we can. Are there other questions, comments, criticisms, concerns about any of the issues going on of the sales tax in particular?
Mr. Chairman, you mentioned four areas that the 1% tax deducted. Could you reiterate those areas, please?
Yes, let me get my notes here. The key areas are, obviously, maintenance of our roadways, provision for resource officers in our schools, support fire departments throughout the county due to the recent funding changes, assist in community, industrial, and business development, and then to cover the remaining deficit in the general fund and continue our business. So, thankfully, five items that we have. I think the bill listed as six because we have community, industrial development separated, but five items in general that we have that going for.
How much is the deficit, again, please?
The remaining deficit at this time is $350,000. We budgeted actually 305, the TBA and lieu tax dropped again. Thankfully, we prepared for a portion of that, but not the whole thing, so that increased our actual deficit for the year.
I've got a suggestion for your resource officers. You know, a lot of these schools are in a municipality. Why can't we send one of our officers over there to walk down the school, or, you know, I know ours is not even five minutes away.
You see that in the communities that can, I think you see some of that, but they don't have the resources, I understand, to provide a real, a more constant need. Plus, I think this is a perfect example of a school that has no municipality to provide it with.
Right, I understand that, but there's some that has municipalities, and I, you know, I don't see no-
You're on the town council, are you sending the officer there now?
He won't go. I've asked him, we've all co-asked him, and he won't go. He says that the county doesn't pay his salary. That's what he said.
Question.
But we tried.
How much is the sales, this penny going to bring in yearly?
We estimate it'll bring in 3.3 million. That's roughly $60 per citizen per year if you break that out. Obviously, there are folks that shop outside of Jackson County, and obviously, we have a whole lot of votes that could pass through Jackson County and pay taxes too, so. But if you were just to take it person by person, it'd be $60 per year. Other questions or comments? Yes?
I'm all for the 1% tax. I mean, if you figure out the wire and tire on your vehicles, if we can get better roads. I just bought my wife a van a month ago, and driving over these roads up in here where I live, I've already got to put new struts on it. That's over $400 for two struts. over $400 for two struts. So if you figure out 1% of what I'll spend on groceries and stuff and all up here, that's not even going to compare to what it's going to cost me to keep my three vehicles going in here. So, I mean, like I say, I'm all for the 1%. If we can have better roads to drive on, and I live in Little Falls subdivision, and I'm still having dirt roads. So I'd be glad to have my road paved. So until people have to drive on dirt roads, they don't know what it's like anymore. When I have to give directions to come into my house and tell them I live on a dirt road, they look at me like I'm crazy. So I'd say I'm all for that 1%, if we can get better roads.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Have y'all considered, Mr. Manning, one of our state representatives that's here? Have y'all considered Smith made a resolution from the commission to the state requesting an increase in state fuel taxes? If I'm not mistaken, I think the federal increase was, the last one was 1993, and the state was 1994, maybe right the opposite or somewhere there. You considered Smith a resolution requesting a increase in state?
For the, for the state to do it or for a local law?
Well, no. For the state to increase fuel tax. Has it been what? That's 20, 22 years since there's been any increase in fuel taxes, federal or state? Approximately, year or take a year.
I believe there have been some solutions talked about, and you may be able to address something.
We're working on a bill around, you increase the gas tax. I'm not sure if the states will be able to do a little bit of gas tax issue. They have come to a, you know, come to a vote yet, or...I can't tell you how much it's going to be or how we're going to do it.
I think that's the big thing, is the question on that is when will it happen, if it will happen and all that. So that's why we've not pursued any further. We could obviously probably send a resolution to support that, but the question is if or when something like that will happen.
I did look back in '94, I think it was from the last time the gas tax went up. We had 48 employees at Public Works. We're now down to 32. A yard of concrete was under $40, and it's over $100 now. A ton of gravel was around $3. It's $10 now. But the gas tax would have to go up considerably to get us up to where we could even maintain a road, much less get ahead of, you know, where we're getting behind there.
Other questions or comments?
Is the 1% going to be on lodging as well?
It will not affect lodging. That would have to be a separate resolution. Again, the reason we haven't pursued multiple items, like tried to pursue lodging or something like that, is we don't want to ask for too many items or something, you know, someone go with this and not go with this. We don't want to confuse the issue. We try to focus on this for now. Lodging tax would be, I think, a good thing to increase. We talked about it a couple of years ago with the plan of producing a couple of other items. But understanding the process and understanding how we're going to have to do it, we feel like one solution that can carry us into the future with the sales tax is the way to go. So no, it won't, it won't affect the lodging. Right. We don't perceive any current lodging tax in place. Other questions?
Can you clarify what the penny's going to be put on?
It'll be, it'll be things like groceries, TVs, anything. Basically, if you go to Walmart...
Buy a piece of gum?
Yeah, anything that you buy.
Anything that you purchase.
Anything by the cash register.
And, you know, there's, there's a lot of discussion about states that reduce that tax on food. I think that'd be something great if we could pursue that in the future. I think you'd have to look at statewide solution too, maybe, but there's ideas like that that can reduce that expense on, like you said, the lower-income folks that I think we need to consider for the future. What this law does, it gives us, it passes, gives us the authority to raise up to one penny. Now, everyone's going to laugh when I say this. Technically, we could reduce that. If we find we're in a situation where our roads are getting repaired in a great manner, we could reduce that. I can't, I'm not going to promise what's going to happen. I don't know if I'll be here when that happens, but the possibility is there. The law is flexible to where we can actually change that revenue source if we see that there's a need for that pay or reduce that. Again, I think I've talked with the mayor of Scottsboro. Their sales tax is up 8% this year. So there's some, there's things that grow there, and maybe in the future would give the opportunity to reduce the tax on essentials like groceries or different types of items. Other questions or comments? Come on, folks.
This may be off the wall. I've talked about it. Say if the state tax, what the state is wanting to build up on taxes, the government talks about, is the county going to get any percentage of that at all?
My understanding, we won't receive any benefit. And I do want to clarify that the government proposal has an automobile tax. This does not affect automobile sales either. But no, we won't get any tax, as I understand it, to offer that proposal.
Everything in his package is for the state. It's not, you know, just to make up for the state's deficit.
Anything else?
Who gets the ad more tax on type? The county, the state?
Yeah, it's split up between the county, the state, education, municipalities, depending on where you live, a lot of, all the different. I could get into the village, because we don't have a percentage, but we have a village rate, but that's a little bit. I'd say in, out in the county, we get about a third of that village rate. Within the cities, it's, I think, at a calculation down to 7% of all that you pay, you know. So it's, the highest we get is about 30% of what you would pay on your tax, and that's if you live out in the county, you have, within no municipality. Yes?
How much progress have you, Sean Leid? How much progress have y'all made with getting the back tax on coal that we lost here a few years ago? Where you at on that? And then second, second part of my question is, are we in a position now, once the price per ton of coal goes back up, we're going to get a lot of coal mining coming out of Vegas where I live? And are we in a position now, we can hold the people fair and get that money this time?
There is no enforcement mechanism that I know of by the state. We don't have enforcement. We have an enforcement officer that could attempt to do that. The dollars we receive off of coal mining, though, are minimal. They, that all does go to paving. And I want to say, is $30,000 too low? Does that sound about right, what we get about every year on that?
I think it's about 40,000.
Forty, about $40,000 a year is what we were getting over the past few years. Now, granted, last year, we saw a lot of coal, coal mining shut down, but, you know, that's not even going to cover the road that those trucks are running on. The few dollars we get on coal mining, it doesn't cover that. Questions on whether they're reporting inaccurately? Again, we don't, ultimately, we don't have that enforcement capacity to say, you better be putting your numbers out there. That's the state law. They take those dollars and send our portion back to us.
And the law also requires that any funds derived from that will be used on the coal routes. It's not money that you can put over in a pot and...
And you did it last time on County Road Agency one. We appreciate that. However, so what you're saying is, Mr. Higginson, we're depending on them to deal straight with us?
That's, that's how it's been.
Good luck. And I'll be away somehow.
We can put pressure, but ultimately, we don't have the final authority to do anything. And with our enforcement officer, if we see some of these rent buck up, we will put pressure, you know, try to put pressure on them.
Appreciate it.
Anything else? Yes?
Do you still want to help, you want to go out and personally write grants or grant for others?
We don't. We have been encouraging our department heads to take a little bit more of that, and elected officials. I know, I think the sheriff's department, have you received something recently? And I know there's something we're looking at, there's some recent issues too. But our department heads, elected officials too, are looking at more of those opportunities. But right now, we don't have anyone. We have someone that we can call if we find one that's just too difficult for us to get involved with, for us to write ourselves. But such as, we just recently, actually, we get the trailers in the bar, I think they'll announce there in a minute, for recycling. We got a grant for some recycling. We've tried for some different grants on, was it resource officers? We tried and didn't get at one point. We're approaching a grant to upgrade some equipment at the courthouse. So the things we know about, we are trying to pursue that. We're working with the state, or the US Center actually has a weekly grant program that comes out. There's not, so far, been a whole lot that will benefit us, but we monitor that, and if there's something again, we can give it to someone to pursue. But we don't have a full-time person. I answer your question more quickly. I answer these questions elaborately, I know, but there's a lot, a lot out there, you know. It's, I like to make, give as much information as possible so that you kind of see the picture of what we're, what we're trying to, or paint a better picture for it.
Does County Inspector got anybody hard to check, muggle home tax?
Yes, the license inspector has started that process.
How long? How long ago?
She's been in three months, no, yeah, three months, I believe, she's been in place.
And you've got plenty of?
Yeah, yes, we, she's, she's already made some headway down in the valley, I know, and she's just working her way up. But she is, she is making the headway. We are seeing some revenue off of that as well, yeah.
Shouldn't be quite a beat.
Yeah. We don't get, again, we don't get the whole amount, but fortunately, it's helpful.
Right.
And that's, you know, that's a position we, we want to make sure it pays for itself, and we'll monitor that over the next year or so, to make sure it pays for itself. But we need to enforce those rules, you know, whatever rule we have in place. Other questions? Well, I, what we, well, I'll call the commissioners first, see if there's anything else. Before we do that, I do want to ask a report from Mr. Manning, if he had anything, or if he has anything. Mr. Wyden?
Yeah, I've got a couple things, Chairman. We did receive delivery after our roll-offs last Thursday. Received all 20 units in. The truck, I spoke with him today, the truck for delivery, they picked these units up. We're hopefully, hopefully be here by the end of this month. I sent y'all an email this morning. I asked you to look at that, and we need to look at rates and stuff like that. And I've asked Puckler before about, leave some kind of contract in place as we start new days and everything, and I talked with him about looking at that. I sent him some stuff that I thought we'd incorporate into this. So maybe if we can, if y'all got any questions about this next week, we'll let you know, and possibly we'll get next commission meeting and see what we can, see what we can vote on.
You said you did send an email out?
Yes, I sent it. I sent an email. Everybody, if everybody shows up.
We can look at that. Probably be prepared if we can Monday.
It's basically, it's, yes, it's got this attachment to it, so y'all look forward. It's got some ideas on the back, got some proposed rates. We've looked at surrounding companies and people that does this, and we put our rates, the rates we're proposing are in line with what we found in our region, about average. Other thing is, as the chairman alluded to just earlier, we, as y'all are aware, we did receive a $63,000 grant made in, and we went through the process and ordered recycling trailers. The, one of those from a company out of Minnesota. He called me this morning, said they put two of them on trailer last month. We got four coming. He put two of those on the trailer last night. We're expecting them to be here tomorrow sometime. Barney not having trouble. Was talking to him, said they had three inches of snow last night. So it was out in northern Minnesota. But those two will be here, and he said the other two that we, the grant we covered will be, will be following just real soon, next few days. And along that same line, I've already got the next year grant in. Hopefully, to cover either four more of those or two more of them in a truck, pull them in. So that's already in place, and we'll usually get a response on that sometime in the summer. So just keep that in mind, and maybe, maybe keep on following through. If we've got it cap led right, if we can, been talking with the lady today, she feels like that we can continue to get this grant consecutive years. If we keep this in for the next three, four years, we're going to want to have a public 45%. And hopefully, we're running 14 recycling trailers, and of course, a truck to handle it for us.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Porter?
I don't have any.
Before we proceed with any further comments from the commission, are there any other questions, any other things? I would like to ask our elected officials, have anything. Mr. Hanning, do you have anything you want to add? Thank you for joining us tonight. Mr. Leid?
No, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Manning? Mr. Manning?
Good day.
Sheriff?
Good day.
Mr. Guffey?
I'd just like to reiterate, there's, there's nobody up here who wants this tax. I sure don't. I think we're overtaxed as it is on a federal level. When we come into office, county is about like the federal government. They're spending more money than state needs. This commission has done a good job of cutting weight. We found a lot of ways. We cut it. Like the chairman said, we didn't fill positions that we, you know, we could have filled, but we wanted to do the responsible thing and try to make sure we balance the budget. That was our most core goal. But the reality is, is either we, we either cut services more, or we do the one sin, you know, I mean, our roads are going to go dirt. I mean, that's the bottom line. I mean, some of our roads, that's the choice we're going to have. If we can only do eight, 20 of them are bad, some of them just might not get no attention. Teachers who want resource officers, there's no money for them. So we have to do this if we want resource officers. ISO rates, fire department's going to go up unless we pass this, we have the fire department. I don't like it, and that's the reason we agreed. We wanted to put on ballot. So if people want it, we'll do it. If they don't, they vote it down, we'll make the cuts, because we're going to balance the budget. So that's where we're at. That's all I got.
Mr. Billy?
I just want to thank everybody that's here to come out and let you know that if you have any questions or contact one of us, or if you're in town, come by the commission office. All of us have business cards on the counter with cell phones on us and emails. We'd like to try to answer any questions you have and let you know that, you know. I certainly am not wanting to say more tax, but what Mr. Guffey says, or none of us up here are, but we're going to find some revenue, cut services and personnel or fund it and work that out. Thank you all for coming out.
Mr. Leib?
Also, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out and not to reiterate everything they say, but, you know, we're an open door. Anybody that's from the courthouse, from the commission office, call me. I'd be glad to meet you and answer what questions I can. These decisions, you know, not easy, you know, and this is not something that we came to use, but we've had to make a lot of hard decisions since we've been in here, you know, to engage us in conversation.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Leib?
I would also like to thank you for coming. But remember, when, when you leave today, our conversations do not have to stop. If you think of something and you want to talk to us, we do want your opinion. I want to hear them, because it gives me something to think about sometimes. Decisions that need to be made in the future are not going to be, we can, we, we get choices to make, and when we make those choices, everyone's going to have to live with them. But I do appreciate you coming out, and you can call me anytime. Thank you all.
Like I said, this, this is a referendum really on the county's future, how we want to pursue, you know, the county and how we want it to either grow or how we want to cut back, whatever, whatever the goal is or whatever the case may be. The people of Jackson County are going to have the option to make that decision. The only thing we want, whether you support it or not, after leaving here tonight, we just want to know that you have as much information as we can get out to you so that you can make an educated decision. Again, whether you support it or not, I hope that you'll share the information that you have. We just want to get the facts out there. Share the facts. Hopefully, folks will, will talk with other folks about that and get the information out there, and we'll continue to do this. This is the first of several community meetings that we're going to be having, and continue to share that information. And when, if and when it does come for a vote, obviously, hopefully, the, all the folks that get out to vote that day, they'll have the facts in hand and be able to make a decision based off of that. We've, I think we've, hopefully, we've done a good enough job at that. If not, please, like they, all of them said, call us, come by the courthouse. There's not a question, I don't think, that we're unwilling to answer about how we've done business. So we'll continue to do that and do our best to be as open as possible and get that information to you. So that concludes everything that we've got for this evening. Again, we hope that if you have more questions, you call us or maybe come to another community meeting. Hope you got some information tonight to help you make a decision. And with that, we will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion, we have a second.
Please.
All those in favor say aye, and opposed say no.